Dear Lord God, it's once again that we humbly come before your throne of grace to give you thanks. We thank you, dear Lord God, for all of your many blessings you've bestowed upon the citizens of Dillon. Dear Lord God, do we ask that you continuously bless our mayor, city council, city manager, department heads on tonight, Lord God, that we gather together to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. In everything we do, we pray we will be grateful to give your name the glory, the honor and the praise, but in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Welcome everybody here this evening. You two over there. I have a motion approved the agenda.
I'd like, if for that, if we can add under new business, possible purchasing of police vehicles.
Make motion accept the agenda as with the addition. Motion, I say, I oppose. Motion approved a minute from December 10th. I propose. I called Glenn last week and I found out quite a few people were commenting on it. But any that commented on this, I just noticed that my wife commented on this coming back through town one night. The lamps on Main Street, somebody must have really worked on them.
We turned in, what, Tina, 20 or so last week?
Yeah.
Y'all got about all of them. I think I saw one.
There's probably half of them that's been done that's been turned in.
Looks more than that.
Well, that included MacArthur Avenue, Railroad Avenue, those also, that one.
Okay, alright. Well, when I'm talking about the lamps, the whole name, we were going down a street coming back from Florence and literally probably more than half were out. And I called Glenn, I just said, just get somebody on it. I didn't know if the reefs around it were causing the lamps to stay off, you know, because it was pouring a light out there, thinking it was daytime or whatever. But riding through tonight, I noticed most of all the lamps are on. I know the people that have called me about it will appreciate that. I made a post on Facebook on this call. I wanted to introduce this guy. I know we hired him last month, named Danny Hayes or Daniel Hayes is the new animal control officer. I did that, Glenn, y'all in your committee evidently hit, like I said, a home run on that, I think. Well, I've gotten 300 comments or congratulatory responses to that man. And most of them are, all of them, I don't have one negative one of him, that he is gonna be the right person for the job. So the community as a whole really thinks high of that fellow. So I wish him the best. He came to see me one day with Benny. Benny brought him in. You know, I told Danny, you know, we expected to help monitor, you know, catch problem animals. Just keep the ear out. But on the flip side of it, he's also a very compassionate person to animals. He owns a number of them himself. I think he said he owns dogs, cats, bees, goats, yeah. I think he's gonna be almost, I don't want to put too high of a bar for him, but he's almost a perfect person. I had mine when we went out looking for one. Because let me tell you, I don't know if y'all get it, I get more calls on that and even had two today on issues with pets, animals and stuff like that. 90% of them is not a problem animal they're calling on. 90% of them is, can y'all please do something about one being chained up on a tree without, you know, the environment with no cover and stuff like that. And of those, 90% of them are out in the county, which he can't do a thing about. But I'm glad to have him. I think he's gonna do very well. He knows what the expectations are going to be and what we expect. He'll take a lot off of y'all at mine remaining time too, I hope. But that's a big deal. That's a big deal for you community on that. Bad news in that area is bad news as far as industry and stuff. Something, you know, a bad situation could cause a company not to come. The community, I think, need more of how you treat your animals and your pets that way. I was asked about the hotel. So I haven't heard on that in months. I talked to the buyer, the seller, last week, Mr. Jackson. He commented to me that they're doing some additional follow-up on the due diligence of that hotel, but they haven't met in a month. But they are still active in it. He said, being the seller, that if that project doesn't go through with that buyer, and this is his words, he's gonna step in and follow through with it. Thank you for what's working, what he said. It's just an update. Man, I got another call today and I think I know to answer one. Maybe y'all do too. If you, the person has a pretty bad situation at their house, somebody's living in a dwelling with no water, no electricity, nothing. He emailed back and said, does he own the dwelling to go get? Police is out there all the time with the man's wife coming in to say it's just a bad situation, hollering, all kinds of stuff. I'm not gonna, certainly not gonna name it. But you can live in a dwelling in the city without water and sewer. I mean, it's their building. They can certainly stay in.
As long as it's not been condemned.
No nuisance, yes.
I'll ask real clear things.
Give us an address, that probably will look at.
The lady that brought it up to me, they never called me about it, I don't know why. But I know she's disappointed with being right beside her. But I'll do that. The Wellness Center. I don't know who followed this, maybe Bridge, but I just want to give you feedback. There's a new game y'all have. I'm not really accustomed to it or know much about it called Pickle, Pickle Ball.
Pickle Ball.
Yeah. Well, that's a big deal up there evidently.
Well, it's getting to be. I mean, it's something that a lot of seniors play, active seniors. We don't have a dedicated pickle ball court.
He said you use a half the basketball court.
We use half the basketball court in the mornings and it's a informal group of people who come and play.
Well, he likes it. He's a senior, but he's really high on that and think whoever followed that and added to the activity.
They've been doing it now probably about two years, to be honest with you.
Speaking of parks. Also called Glenn on the lights at the park. Did y'all check that?
Yeah, those were turning also.
Behind issues with cats and dogs and horses and that stuff, a lot of my calls are about things to do when you end a park. You know, we hear people come in and they'll say, we haven't updated our parks, or maybe we haven't updated it like we should. I had somebody mention, nobody done nothing in a park in 10 years. I remind you, only spent $100,000 at the new park at the Wellness Center.
They were upgraded in April.
Yeah.
They spent a little on them, on all the negative.
I think personally, we can get so much or a big bang for the buck by modernizing Harmon Park. You know, it's such a good-looking park and since we updated it with the lights and everything 15 years ago. I mean, that's close to when I came in, we added those landscaping lights out there. I was going through Florence a couple of months ago and I saw their park and I've had some people in the, and I brought this to you before, he said, why don't we do a horseshoe turn or something like that? But that park there had horseshoe pits. Would be a great thing to add there without really a huge expense for an activity at that park. And it's got enough room to do it. The other thing is, you know, we got an old tennis court there that's just fenced around partially with concrete. Why not use some of the 2 cent money to take that concrete out, buy a fence, and put a volleyball court there and load it up with sand? I mean, just something else outside that you don't have to maintain much and just having some other things to do. Because a lot of that space at that park is just not utilized at all. What do y'all think? I mean, that's, just think, something you can do without a ton of money adding to an existing piece of property.
I was thinking how, how they, these are pretty basketball balls where they can tear loads of wood off. You know, if you're that way, I don't know how people would, like you said, you know, we wanna play volleyball, so we want, you know, we call the city and they go put it up and take it down and they'll through. I mean, that's a lot of work.
That could be.
But I think if you leave that net out there all the time, it's gonna, you know, that's a...
It would, maybe, or you could try.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, I think, you know, you might, you might get a lot of play out there. You'd be surprised how many of these kids.
I see a lot of nets go up on grass for bad mitten and volleyball out there in the summer and spring when I go about. I'll see, it'd be nice to have a, to move that concrete and just put a sand court out there for that. That'd be such an enhancement. That's just two ideas for the park. The other one that was, I don't know how much you could do about it, was a little something for a, I'm gonna say a disabled child, but...
Well, we did, well, we talked about that a year or so ago. We put in a handicap swing and within a month's time, we had headaches there if I remember correctly. In fact, we ended up taking that out different bird again. We had it in there two or three times. People misuse it and that type of thing.
Actually got it done without.
Yeah. The other thing would be, and you see this a lot, is a all-inclusive playground. And by saying that, just trying to use the correct terminology, that includes all children of their abilities. That could be the place to do it.
I think you want to do with Harmon and other parks, a little bit every couple of years. Instead of trying to ram stuff down, spend a lot of money every five years. Because we do get, you know, we're online for the pardon me, you spend it on great projects. Harmon is the most used park, I think, by far. In the most visible part. It does, a nice park in the middle of an old community like that, wrapped around with old oak trees and, you know, you got the church and the garden club taking care of the corners. A lot of the walkers. That needs to be absolutely a priority for the city. Because it's in the central location of your town. Sign, what about our sign? You need to look at that.
Yes, sir. The one on Main Street, we yet to replace the one that was taken out back in the summer. At the Wellness Center, a car ran off the road and took it out. So we're gonna do both of those digital signs.
Lastly, I know you're gonna speak about, I'm not gonna bring much on the demolition of Hampton Street. Other than, for a lot of people are gonna be glad to see that. But people will commonly say, well, the city sure has laid down on Main Street. Look at Main Street and I come back home and, you know, the buildings that are empty and all this stuff. I like to remind people, it's not the city's responsibility to keep up somebody's private property. The property owner has let the building deteriorate. Then the city has the issue where it's gotten so bad, where they don't fix it, it gets condemned and then it comes right back on us, just like what we're gonna be spending this money on in Hampton. That's why we enforce it. And we have to, you know, really enforce it now. I know you've had some that's got some facade grants for February and they're moving and that's good. I hope they all do. But we'll see. You know, Florence, I was listening to every morning on, for some of the work on TV 13 around 6:30, the new local news comes on and they're talking about Florence and the investment made in the city of Florence went from three restaurants to 13 restaurants and the new theater there and what Francis Marion and the grocery foundation is doing. But what staggered me the other day, Florence, they have spent $265 million in downtown Florence over the last six days of the city revitalization, which just floored me how much money that they put in. In fact, I thought I heard it wrong, 265 million.
Are you talking about private money or public money?
Total, total. That's still a lot of money. I don't care. So, you know, I heard that and I knew that hurt my ears up and I said, you couldn't have heard that right. So I went back and I read some old articles and they had one from 2015. And in 2015, they had spent $170 million. So I heard it right two or three years later, 265 million dollars, which triggered me to think, like, what in the world would a million dollars do to downtown Dillon? Or a couple? You know, I'll still say that spark's gonna come. You'll still have it because there's a lot of things going on in this county that eventually the Main Street's gonna have to pick up and catch up in its wheel. But as far as your council, I think we're doing, it's valid, all we can do, we match and give money up to go and enhance the front of people's buildings, inside of people's buildings. I got a call from a fellow the other, again, it's been a busy week. Last week, another town's asking, how are we doing these grants? And I want to know where the money's coming from. I said, the money's coming from what we budget. We're making an investment and it's gonna take a little time, but you will start seeing the, we knew it weren't a quick fix, but you're gonna start seeing some improvements on the front of the buildings and so forth. But hopefully it sells some of it if they don't spend the money on it. So I had a fellow office today worrying about buying some or interested in buying some. So activity will pick up. So hopefully the activities will be, I will reserve it for the rest of my time.
I'm gonna follow up with, talking about the streetlights earlier. My office has been working hard here the last month and a half and updating Facebook and other social media avenues that we use. And on our face, on our website page, Tina has included now a link to Duke Energy. So if people see a streetlight, if you go to our website and you go to Duke Energy's link and it'll walk you through if you have a streetlight in front of your house. All you have to do is just look at the poll, the poll number off and we show a clip of what the poll number looks like. Folks can actually do this themselves.
Little metal clip.
Little metal clip. And you can go online and put that information in with Duke Energy. That helps. It takes anywhere from three to five days, once they get the work order to do it, to change them out or to fix them, whatever the case may be.
Again, if it's not wanting to rock, put on one for someone near to out there, do the same thing?
No, that would have to come, they have to come through us and we have to witness that. Because then we have to sign a contract to add that to our account. Now, speaking of that, back in August, I believe it was, we had some folks out in Pine Street area talking about some lighting on Carmichael Boulevard. We're still waiting on those. Those have been requested and they were scheduled to start and work on that in September. But the hurricane come and hadn't seen them. So I called them back in December and they've got it on their schedule to do. But there was two or three pole and lights that we were gonna put down Carmichael Boulevard, since there were none there. So those are in the works. So that should be taken care of soon. Also, following up on the animal control that we're starting to do, I think we had one last week that was put on our Facebook page. If we pick up a stray animal, we're taking a picture of that stray animal, turning it over to Tina. She'll put it on Facebook so people can say that, you know, where we picked this animal up, what it looks like, if it's theirs, to contact the animal shelter. And I think the animal shelter does some of that also. But we felt like it was a good way of getting our word out to people to see the animals that we do pick up that possibly they know who the animal is off. So that is something we have started here last week. And we're discussing, and I'm waiting to see what happens in Ory County. They passed an ordinance or one or two readings, they have to have three, back in November and December concerning tethering animals, tethering dogs to a tree. Waiting to see where that goes. Not sure if this can happen, because state law doesn't say, doesn't, doesn't, what's the word I'm looking for? State law doesn't not recognize it or doesn't say you can't. So I don't know that we actually can do something of that sort. But if it passes and it doesn't look like there's gonna be much drawback, maybe something we need to look into as far as tethering dogs to trees or states. They had a line drawn out one where the dog can only be tethered for four or five hours during the day. I don't know if, you know. Bingo.
Well, I think that, I hope Danny, he'll use common sense to be like tethering a dog. You know, if he sees a dog tethered in no shade, 100 degrees in the summertime, he needs to go look for it. Now, if you got a doghouse beside it or a shelter where that dog can get to and it's, I mean, that's, you just don't have to deal with it, with people like that.
Absolutely. And we get calls about dogs being left in yards that may not be tethered, but in a backyard. And during the rainy part of the, after the hurricane, we got a lot more rain and people would call us about a dog, or dogs. They had nowhere to go. Well, if they had a doghouse, whether the dog goes in the doghouse or not, nothing you can do. I have a laugh that when he gets out of his kennel during the day, if it starts raining, he's not going back in his kennel. He wants to be out in the water. So we'll try to use the best common sense that we have when it comes to those things. Kind of gonna mix it up a little bit tonight. I have some of our department heads who are gonna actually speak to councilmen tonight about some different issues that they've been dealing with here in the last few weeks and months. First, we'll start with Chief David Lane. And the reason that I asked that, the police vehicle purchase, possible police vehicle purchase be put on the agenda, he's gonna make a proposal and talk about condition of his vehicles and then, you know, he can ask questions, but we really won't want to vote on that until the new business, even if you don't want to vote on it, we can still have it in a new business. And if you say we'll deal with it another month, we'll just skip over that. So I'll turn it over to Chief Lane.
I met with, I talked with Glenn, I've been talking to him about vehicles for a while now. And we, the last time we purchased vehicles was after Matthew. We purchased four vehicles that were flooded. We were able to save two of the vehicles. We carried them over to the folks in Florence and they cleaned them out. And they, they still have a little over, but we're able to use them. But now we have, now that we're full, we actually do not have enough vehicles for all of our folks. We have one Black Crown Vic that one of the cadets, once he graduates academy, would have to drive that. It's just not, not a good situation. And the proposal that I submitted to Glenn was that current, the four vehicles that I am asking for council to approve, purchase is a '06 Crown Vic, a '07 Crown Vic, and two 2008 Crown Vics. And these guys are, they're driving them. They're not really safe and we need to consider putting these officers in vehicles that are in poor shape. All of these vehicles have well over 100,000 miles on them. And there are several options that we'd like for you to consider. We met with Enterprise Fleet Management. We, me and Glenn both were pretty skeptical when thinking about leasing vehicles. But what, what they're proposing to us is that you would lease a vehicle and that payment per year for one vehicle and we'll assume that the price would be $35,000. That's fully equipped. They handle getting all the equipment in the vehicles for you and you don't start paying until they deliver it. It's a five-year lease. It will cost you about $70, $7200 per year, per vehicle. It's a five-year lease. At the end of five years, there's a $5,000 buy down. You own all equity except for $5,000. And what, the selling point is that we're able to buy vehicles for about $7,000 to $10,000 cheaper than to jump up it. We're buying it on state contract. And so we have more equity in these vehicles than the average person would. So we could sell these cars and they, what they pride themselves in is when to sell the cars. And so you can make sure you get as much money out of the car as you possibly can. So what they would propose is to sell those cars after five years. Well, if we replace four cars at $35,000 apiece, then it would, it would complete our drug fund. Because I, you know, we discussed it. We, we know that that's probably where the money's gonna have to come from, is the drug fund. But I would just caution you that that money is not guaranteed and it is not gonna be there forever. So I would like to see where we don't put ourselves in a situation where we have to buy four cars. If we could buy two cars every year and somehow find a way to stick it in the budget so we know that, all right, we can buy these two cars every year. We guarantee these two cars so our fleet does not get so old.
What's your total number of cars?
We currently have 27 vehicles. And it was a, that is one of the ways we've been able to retain our employees.
If it is for a year, then that would be a seven-year-old vehicle by the time it was turned out. And how much cheaper is it, can we buy them than like, you know, the lease companies?
We, they would buy at the same price that we, they would buy on state contract. And they would just, the, I guess the, the only, the main selling point was, to me, was it would be a quick fix for us immediately. Because we would have to put out about $28,000 a year for five years as opposed to buying four cars at, all at one time.
What you're saying is do that as a quick fix and then budget your four cars a year?
Budget two cars. I would just ask for two cars.
Then you're looking at 14-year-old cars. Please don't make me drive 14-year-old cars.
Well, I understand, but we...
We are. I know we are.
We are. And we just, we need to do, we need to do something and I'm not asking to spend $200,000 tonight. I'm just, I'm asking to fix our problem immediately so we can reassess it in the new business.
See, the only thing, we're not looking at ever leasing a car always, but setbacks always, you're limited on mileage. That's not an issue.
There's not an issue there. The difference in this, and I, and if you, if you want to table this and I'll put this in your package or get, see if you may put this in the package for next month. I'm okay with that, but I just, I mean, time is of the essence. But it is, we own all the equity in the vehicles. They don't, it's not like the lease that you hear. They don't, it's not like the, uh, the, the lease of, um, that you hear leasing a vehicle is, is not that kind of lease. And city manager asked, so what's the difference in us going to the bank and just borrowing money?
We're paying five thousand dollars to have thirty-five thousand dollars for five years is basically what happens. No? I mean, you said we have to pay five thousand at the end of it.
Pay, that is, no, 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 that is, that is what, what the end dollar amount that you will owe on that vehicle at the end. That's not the interest that you're paying on it.
No, I know, but, but what I'm saying is, is that basically they're going to amortize the thirty-five thousand dollars over five years. And at the end of the five years, you're going to have to pay five thousand dollars to have that vehicle, right? So basically you're paying five thousand dollars for that thirty-five thousand dollars for five years. Can somebody do that math? I mean, a thousand dollars.
That's thirty-five.
Well, it's four hundred, four hundred dollars a year, so it's, right? Five years.
He said seven thousand dollars a year to lease it.
Seven thousand dollars a year?
So that's thirty-five thousand plus the five, that's forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, sixty months and if I have that, you're paying.
The, the interest rate is, what, do you remember what he said? It was about.
When I asked, what's the difference between doing it through them or just going to the, you know, our local bank and borrowing money? He said, interest rate, we'd probably get a lower interest rate if my, if my memory serves me.
That, that is correct, and he, he was, I mean, he was clear that you could get a better.
His other point was, on the equity was, after five years, if you want to turn this car in.
Right.
And start another one, we'll take the car that you turn in, we will sell it.
For you.
For you, and anything over five thousand dollars that the car sold for comes back to you. Am I correct?
That is correct. Because they, you know, they, they're selling their leased vehicles all, all the time. So they, they know, they know how, they know how to do it.
So when we buy a leased car, we got to equip it.
Right, and they're, they're putting that into, they're rolling that into the lease.
How much does that cost when you buy a car?
Ten thousand?
About ten thousand.
We reuse that equipment though.
We, we reuse most of it, yes.
If it had been damaged in a wreck or, or flood, that's correct. If we wreck it?
If we.
You know, I don't know that we even talk, I, I, well, you still be on insurance.
We have to maintain any of this.
Yeah, still have.
We have to maintain that insurance.
Still have the insurance that would be just like we have today.
Yeah, I think y'all, y'all, if you were smart enough to know.
Well, it gives us, and, and if we can wait the next month, that'd be great where we can give them that breakout. The idea was every year, was it every year? Yeah, every year, what they presented or they proposed is we get new vehicles in the leased car. Well, after about, I don't remember, seven, eight, nine years, it would be awful expensive for us to be making payments.
It would, it would be about two hundred thousand dollars a year to have the, the entire fleet with these folks. And, and our, our concern was that, that we didn't have much control. Because they, I mean, then you're kind of stuck with them.
You're just looking at a little stopgap to start this.
I have a couple of questions I might ask.
Sure.
First of all, with the drug fund money, are we waiting on any money to come in to the drug fund?
I think there may be one case out there. We're, we're pretty well, we don't.
But you got a surplus in the city courts. I mean, the last two years, you, right now, you're going to have a surplus. So my thing is, why don't we use some of the money that the officers are out here doing their jobs to come back and buy two vehicles? I mean, they got, so if you even got to go in the drug fund and get one car out of that, you got a surplus from the city courts for the last, for this year and last year. I mean, that money's available.
Well, you say it's available, when you say there's surplus in court, there may have been a, you know, at the end of the year, based on our audit this past year, what did, I can't remember the exact number, that we came revenue above expenditures in general fund, what was that number?
Well, I know it's all tied in together.
Yeah, I mean, it just, because all that gets back into what we call, um, operation account, a depreciation account.
Right, but my concern though is, is you said that we don't have enough vehicles for the officer that we got now, correct?
We, once these two graduate police academy and they're in week, week two. They've got ten more weeks.
Ten more weeks, okay.
We, we have a vehicle we can put them in.
I understand, but they got a hundred thousand mile on them.
Well, no, we, one of them is a black unmarked Crown Vic and I really don't want to put a, a cadet right out of the police academy in, in an unmarked vehicle. And we also have one that's wrecked that we're, we're having to kind of.
Well, another thing too is that we got all our money from the, from the floods and from that wrecked car that's down at the service department now? From the insurance company?
From the hurricane, no, we're still, Janet was meeting with FEMA that they finalized that. So that could be a year out, two years.
What about the car that was totaled that's down there now?
We're working on that now.
That one still with insurance.
How much money do you think we'll get back? Just give me a ballpark.
What's the year of that car, Dave?
Fourteen or.
This year.
No, 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 I'm sorry, it's a fifteen or sixteen.
So that car probably costs twenty-five to twenty-eight thousand, we might get half of that.
Well, that just gives me an idea of sharing with them what we can accomplish with it. But I would really like to see us have two cars available for our two cadets or, every how you shuffle, have two cars available for every police officer to keep going where they're going. Taking them home and being available for them. That's like you said, one of the incentives that we have.
Well, that and, and you know, if one of them's down, then for some reason accountable problems or wreck. We always like to keep spares, just because you never know.
Can we table it?
Yeah, I mean, that's, and that's what I'm saying, I got into new business and.
How long will it take them to get the cars ready, first of all?
I would, I would assume about thirty days.
Thirty days, so we're to table it.
Yeah.
I mean, would I want to take one boat? I mean, so.
Yeah. Like I said, I've had it in the approval agenda, just in case y'all wanted to make it to see it and it was on the agenda. But once we get to that, we can just table it. If that's what y'all seem fit to do. And then I do want you to see that report, just to give me an idea.
That's what you want us to do with that.
That's all there, Chief?
Yes, sir.
We got Bert listed to speak about storm drainage and what he's been dealing with and what he was doing today. Kind of give you an idea of some things, but before he starts, and I told you back in October, I believe it was, it might have been November, that Representative Hayes, he reached out to me wanting to sit down and meet about storm drainage in the city. And he wanted to have someone on the DOT involved in that meeting. That is scheduled for Monday, the twenty-eighth of January at ten o'clock. So if any of you want to sit in on that, you're more than welcome.
Is the public allowed to sit in on it?
No, 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 no. Yeah, no, this is just for you.
Will you be attending to talk on Monday?
But it's at ten AM on January twenty eighth, no, it's not, it's for the public. This is just to talk about what we got, what they may be able to do or may not be able to do. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Bert.
Well, as all of you know, since Hurricane Matthew has been a, Florence has been a major issue. Today, we had a gentleman come into town to look in some of our problem areas. Virginia Lane, Johnson Drive, Lee Circle area, Laurel Lane. And what he, he brought a camera and it's like a, it's on a tripod and we were able to put it down in each catch basin, manhole and view, you know, down the pipe. You know, couldn't really say exactly how far we were viewing, but from what we saw, you know, most of the pipes, we, we really didn't have a structural problem that would, you know, be of big significance, you know, that, that caused a major backup. So what we determined pretty much, you know, from looking, you know, in all the, you know, the problem areas is the pipes were just small. You know, there's a few issues with roots growing in the pipes and things like that. But, you know, nothing that, you know, would jump out and stand out, but this is why all the water was back, you know? The biggest, you know, the biggest thing is, you know, the pipes are small and it just takes time to drain because all of them are coming to one location. So that's, that's, you know, pretty much what we saw there. You know, in the meantime, you know, we've been out assessing some of the canals in the area, checking for debris that's fallen into the canals since the storm. And, you know, it's been so wet, we haven't been able to get out and do much. But soon as it dries up, we're going to get back in and, and check some of the canals and make sure they're free and flowing well. Continuing to check catch basins, that's a daily job, you know, with debris falling and trying to keep them clean. You know, something, you know, homeowners, you know, they can help tremendously with that. You know, if you got a catch basin in your yard, if you can keep it free, just a little bit of leaves, you know, stop it up. You know, like I say, over in, you know, the problem areas, we, we looked in, you know, we had a, the camera, it was amazing to me. You know, you put that thing in, you can look down and see if you got a problem, you need to clean this one or clean that one. You know, maybe in the future, one day when we get on our feet a little bit, you know, with our stormwater feeds and all that, that maybe one day we could, you know, make a purchase that, with a camera like this to, to help speed up the cleaning process. You can go look in and take a quick pic. You know, this line needs to be cleaned, this one, you know, where you're not wasting time by just cleaning the line, it's already cleaned.
Bert, I thought we had one of those robot things.
It's outdated, I mean.
Well, with that was through, with sewer lines, it won't work in, in storm drainage. Because storm drainage is, is more.
Pipe's a lot bigger and, you know, storm drains, they typically have more debris in them. I mean, you can go clean them and all, but you're still going to be left with a little bit of silk, you know, roots or something like that.
Drips the robot.
Right. But, um, like I say, you know, we look, you know, you know, like in Virginia Lane area and especially wherever flooded real bad and the water stood for days in Johnson Drive. Pipes look, you know, they're fairly clean, I mean, there's a few up and downs here and there, but, you know, nothing that really jumps out. You know, that's a, now you got pipes running in people's backyards and under houses and things like that. So it's, you know, it's a, you know, it's not an easy thing to, you know, say we're going to do this or do that.
Where do they all come together?
Well, it just depends on what area you're draining.
Well, that's about there, you were dollars.
You know where Robert's Road is, where Tim Ammons lives? There's like a waste pond area that, that, uh, water from Virginia Lane, Lee Circle.
I thought Virginia went behind, uh.
Virginia Lane goes down.
Yeah, Virginia Lane goes down behind on Hand Court, right. That's correct. Lee Circle, Johnson Drive, and Maple Street, all that, it drains over, behind Tim Ammons.
With that being said though, and we got this meeting with the state, you said, between, I mean, and you shared that information with them, what are we trying to get accomplished with the state? What, what are they going to do?
I don't know, I don't know.
I mean, if the piping.
You know, the biggest issue that, that we think is, which we know, I mean, everybody knows, the size is the biggest issue. But in some cases, there's nothing you can do because we have some areas that where the storm drain goes, actually under a house. And the only way you can replace that pipe is either redirect it or move the pipe.
Or supplement.
Yeah.
Yeah, just supplement, yeah.
It, it's not an easy fix. I mean, or, you know, really nothing ever is, but, you know, it's, you know, it's the starting point where we can meet with these guys and, you know, maybe come to some ideas.
You know, it stood there for a long time, y'all, against the backer truck blew that line out on the Hand Court, it moved much quicker.
Right.
You know, a fifteen-inch pipe, I think.
So when you get like a fifteen-inch pipe and you get a hubcap in it or a basketball or something like that, I mean, you find all kinds of things in these pipes. And like I say, it's really important for the community to do their part as well as our part, you know, to help keep them clean. That will benefit everyone. So it's, it's a challenge to keep debris out of the pipes because they're small. Get a hubcap turned in there, it'll stop the whole thing up. And it happens. Get in there and blow it out and then it'll break it later.
I will say, I was, I was disappointed this morning when I went where they went and looked at it. I thought I was going to see lockages, you know, or, you know, something that's going to say, here's what the issue was, but it wasn't.
But give me a general idea, how did he done that? What, just lowered the, um, camera down in the manhole?
It's a camera head is about this big. It looks like a flashlight you hold almost, but it's turned upside down like this. And it's on a, a big long rod. And it, you know, and it's, you put it, just lower it down in the hole and the rod kind of pulls out and it stands and the head will move up and down. And you put it in the pipe and you can see down the pipe, it's got a real bright light up around it where you can see down the pipe and focus in, it'll focus in up to three hundred feet.
It transmitted by wifi to a tablet.
Yeah, and you can see it on the tablet.
That's correct. We're holding it adjusted how you want, maybe turn left, right, up or down.
Yeah, we're holding the tablet in our hand, looking inside the pipe.
Now, that piece of equipment, sixteen thousand dollars. And, and you look at it, you go, where's sixteen thousand dollars at?
It's a big flashlight on, on wifi.
Yeah.
It really looked pretty cool. We were ever going to look in, I don't know, fifteen or twenty catch basins in maybe about two hours.
It seems like we need something we need to buy.
I, I think so too, but I.
And we're talking about it, I mean, and that's, that's one of the things for the stormwater feed that, to do something like that. It, it, it won't, it will help to see potential problems that could be in there. There was one that we saw today that we don't know, because this one he brought us didn't have a, a mechanism or a laser on it that would give us how many feet it was looking at or if you went to a spot and marked it, it wouldn't show you how many feet. But there was a section that we weren't quite sure if the pipe moved left or right or if there was one coming in, it looked like it, but you really couldn't tell. And that's the one that was pretty much under a house. Or we think, but at least that portion was under the house. Then there was another section that showed a dip and couldn't tell why there was a dip if the pipe was broken or, you know, whatever it may be. But just looking at it, the vast majority of it, you think, why do we have issues? Because it was pretty clean in those areas. But we wanted just to brief you on, on that, to let you know along with the meeting that I've got with the state at the end of this month.
And the meeting's only where?
In my office.
You got pictures of it?
No, we didn't, no, because this was on, it's, this company's stuff. But we had DOT, local DOT with us, so they saw it too, to get an idea. Lastly, I have Mr. Hardy Jackson to kind of brief you on Highway thirty-four water tank and where we are on it.
Well, we've got a tank full of chlorine and water. Waiting to get, we got to drain it, get two back tees, twenty-four hours apart. We should have it online, maybe it is this week, first of next week. He nicks us through all the paint and everything, it looks good, they did a good job.
Looks good, working good.
How much did that cost us? Seventy-eight, eighty?
Eighty-nine.
Did you happen to get out there and watch and see how they did it, Hardy?
Watched a little bit of it.
It was amazing. I took pictures of it, I mean, you would think that it would take forever. I think it took them, what, less than eight hours? To cut, weld back and then put it back in place.
Wow.
It was amazing.
And that cost us, the cost.
It was an additional two hundred sixty-three thousand dollars.
Pretty good money an hour. Thirty grand an hour.
Took them longer than painting.
Yeah. Absolutely. That's all I have at this time.
In our financial highlights, our general fund and our total cash accounts, we've got a million, four hundred eighty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. Our revenues for two thousand and eighteen fiscal year is two million, seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. For seventeen fiscal year was two thousand, three hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars.
That was two million.
Two million. I'm sorry, doctor. Which is a difference of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. The backer truck proceeds of two hundred and thirty-five thousand was included in that, which is still, we were a little short this year versus last year of thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. And a lot of that comes into the property tax, which our revenues are like thirty-five percent where we should be at fifty percent, but that's due to property tax and business license that we get later on in the year. And then our expenditure.
I don't understand why, why is the backer truck of two hundred and thirty-five thousand bigger than the revenue?
That's proceeds that we got in.
That's what the bank gave us to pay that off. We borrowed two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Oh, and that was done in two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen, that's correct. Our expenses year-to-date for this year is three million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. Our, um, expenses year-to-date for this year is three million, two hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars. In two thousand seventeen, last year, was three million, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars. We're on a difference of twenty-three thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars, which we're at fifty-five percent, fifty-five percent of our expenses, which we should be around fifty percent on that. Our water and sewer, we've got a total of all our accounts is three million, four hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars. Our year-to-date revenues is two million, one hundred eighty-six dollars, six hundred eighty-one, two million, one hundred eighty-six thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars. Last year, it was a million, nine hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars. A difference of two hundred eleven thousand, five hundred thirty, which is due to the insurance proceeds of a hundred fifty thousand, which the difference out of that would be sixty-one thousand, five hundred thirty dollars. We've got our revenues is at, pretty much at fifty-nine point nine percent, which is above where we should be at, which is good. Our expenses are, this year, is a million, seven hundred eight thousand, three hundred seventy-four dollars. Last year, it was a million, six hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred forty, which we brought, you know, we brought, our expenses are more, fifty-one thousand, eight hundred thirty-four thousand more this year. That's due to forty thousand, nine hundred four, is in pump repairs, lift stations, and then we had, um, about seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-three in equipment to run water service lines with. So, we have forty-six percent in expenses in water, so, you know, we're, we're down a little bit, which is good. Our highlights for the golf course, we have seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-six dollars in the account. Our revenues this year was eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars. Last year was eighty-six thousand, eight hundred eighty-one, a difference of one thousand, eight hundred thirty. This year, we have transferred ninety thousand into the golf course from two percent. Last year, um, this time was forty-five thousand, that's due to we have not received, still have not received our fifty thousand from the county, which I've been told we should get that in February.
Great.
For, for this year.
The year that we're in.
That we're in. The year that we're in. We received it last, last fiscal year, the fiscal year, yes. Um, our expenses, a hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars this year. Last year was a hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred twenty-one dollars, which is three thousand, twenty-one dollars difference in our expenses, so... Our two percent hospitality fund has got eight hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred nine dollars in it. Our revenues year-to-date this year is two hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars. Last year, fiscal year, was two hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars. We're at fifty-six percent on that. Um, we did transfer this year for the, for the audit six thirty-eighteen, a hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars from two percent to pay general fund back for the expenses. And then, the, the, well, the general fund pays in excess of what they bring in, what the wellness center brings in. In the year before, it was a hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars.
So, you had, we had a shortfall in the wellness center of a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
Eight hundred seventy-seven, yeah.
When was it, year prior?
Year prior was a hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars, which was about a thousand, two hundred ninety-nine difference.
That's outside of making a payment.
Right, right, and our payments coming up on that, coming up...
Comes up in February.
February, so...
You already took it out of the, have you already taken it out of the ledger?
The payment's coming up in February, no, but I've taken the hundred and seventy-two thousand out.
So, it's gonna be less than six hundred thousand dollars in next month.
Well, no, it, that, that'll show up in March.
Well, I know, you say, if you took out the payment today, you will have to take it out. If it's six hundred thousand, that's actually...
You're gonna have probably... It takes us roughly...
Another hundred...
Yeah.
Seventy-five, eighty or a hundred thousand, the way up to that.
Takes us about four and a half months.
We'll get, we'll get in probably another, this, this month, we'll probably get in like forty, forty-eight thousand, somewhere along in there. And then February, same thing, so...
About, about four, about five thousand dollars.
Okay.
We'll have, we'll have close to a million dollars.
Any questions?
Good, got one. I didn't understand what you just said. You said that we, we take it, the principal payment comes out, you know, next month?
It'll be in March, it'll come in, it comes out in February, but it'll show in our report in March.
But we should collect another...
Ninety thousand.
Ninety, ninety thousand, so, we got almost a million, so, we'll probably be back at like seven, seven figures, I suppose, another six hundred.
And I, I think, if memory serves me, I can't remember exactly, is it two hundred thirty thousand payments about, or two twenty?
Two hundred thirty, yeah.
Five, two thirty-four.
Okay, yeah, is it, that's about four and a half, five months of collecting.
No, excuse me, it's two hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars.
I knew you would know it.
That's what it is.
Can you tell me why the county hadn't given us all money?
They just said they, you know, just couldn't give us right now.
They said they just couldn't give it to us?
I mean, that, I didn't go into it with it, I just...
Based on, based on watching their council meetings here the last two months, they talked about being strapped for money.
The reason I ask, because we're seven months into fiscal budget, and we haven't seen our money.
But we, we requested it in July, and usually we get it July to August, September time, but due to the fact, based on what they said, overall, generally, their budgets or their revenues, in November, December, they were in tight shape. They wanted to make sure they paid some different things off that they owed, and we just put on the bad side of it.
How many more years on that note?
Seven.
Seven.
We borrowed it in two thousand five, and it was twenty years, no, twenty years, yeah, so we got seven more payments.
You know, another thing I want to ask you is, I, I know this hospitality, we do one on our harvest system, and I know we talked about this before. But how are you voting this about?
Same thing.
Do you mean to tell me on, on the harvest year?
And we looked, I don't know, two years ago, um, Benny was doing, um, business licenses renewals. And we'd look at certain ones to see what they showed on their gross for their renewal for business licenses, and it pretty much closed what they would give us during the year for their...
But we kind of all agree, we want to provide a seat.
Now, if, if you know that a national chain that may be located here is giving us numbers that, you know, that throws up a red flag, that you kinda have an idea what some of those...
All right, thank you. Uh, anything anybody want to bring in our kitchen or something? Uh, new business resolution, one nineteen hundred in the Dillon High School varsity football team, so big motion.
I said we're gonna pay it.
I agree.
Is that gonna be at another time, or what?
What's that?
New resolution, when am I gonna get it?
This is it.
This is it?
Yeah. And I've spoke with Coach Hades last week, and they invited him.
It is a story.
I know it Friday night, it said it's six state titles in the last... Yes, but did he correct it? Seven.
Seven of the last eleven, yeah.
Got a lot in common with the New England Patriots.
Go back to the sign this thing at the wellness center, the person that took it out, they don't have to, they, we got some insurance...
Insurance money paid for that, or they gave us insurance money, we got insurance.
All right. Uh, business demolition of property at one-one-two East Hampton Street.
All right, in your packet, I submitted two bids, um, to, to do this work. The highest bid was from Charles Smith out of Sumford, South Carolina, for seventy-four thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars. Uh, the lowest bid was from Walfer Demolition and Renovations out of Florence for thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. This building, we also paid a company four grand, give or take, to do an asbestos study back during the spring. And both of these companies got a copy of that, so they can base their quote, and follow what guidelines are for that hazmat material.
Is there a license or a bond?
Yeah, they have to, yeah, they have to do that, yes, and they have to be certified through the state.
Do you get a motion to accept the low bid?
Yes, sir.
I make that motion.
Motion got second all in favor? I mean, they deny, all opposed.
How quick will this start to happen?
Uh, we'll call the Walfer demolition tomorrow, and hopefully they'll get it scheduled. We met with him back in December to get some information, so he's...
Well, that was good news, or was that...
It, it absolutely was, I mean, we've been searching and searching, trying to find other people to bid, and...
So, will the land be ours?
No. Land will be ours. If, if the folks do not reimburse us who own the land, I mean, it'll be turned over to tax collections, and we'll put a lien on the property, but we will not own the property.
Yeah, what about, can you give the same bid on that?
We haven't got anything on that one yet, but we've talked about on those. And I've talked with Donner on that particular one, and he's got a study that was done there, you know, and trying to get him to get that one taken care of himself.
Yeah, that twenty years.
Yes. But if it doesn't come through, that's something that we can, once again, we'll go out and bid it out, and see what the cost will be.
All right. Uh, council number four, council number...
Whoa, 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 wait a second, wait.
Or the police vehicles?
Yeah, you need to table that motion, I mean, table that.
I made the motion to table it to the next meeting, to the report.
All right, got a second all in favor? I mean, they can say no, all opposed, and right. Now, we'll get some different reports as well.
Um, I just want to go back and, I'm looking at the minutes, I want to make sure if this can be done or can't be done on a solid basis. Let's say a business already applies and gets half the money, and there's still money on the tables, can that business come and get some more of the money?
If, if, and, and we don't have a, a drop date, but let's just say, we've got eight committees that's been awarded, all twenty-four thousand, three thousand needed, what we say. And let's just say, everybody has completed their projects in a timely manner, and there's whether it's five hundred dollars or five thousand dollars, we get it back, see if anybody wants to speak or stuff, to reach out to those ones.
What are we doing about the, the upfit grant, the first one you're doing? What, what's, what's being done with the guys taking care of the projects? They got our money.
Right now, nothing's been done on either one of them.
So, how do we hold their feet to the fire and get this done?
I don't know, I, I don't have an answer to that.
So, what about the last two, we, we, we gave out, don't have a timeframe?
One of them has completed, uh, Dr. Hooker, from what I understand, we haven't gotten the paperwork, that what he applied for his roofing and all, that's been done. Now, the one that Judge McIntyre filed, I don't know if she started, but they have until Ju, January end of this month to pull permits, because they had sixty or ninety days from the time they were awarded full permits.
So, they got a timeframe, but the first two we, we, we gave out, don't have a timeframe?
Well, they had a timeframe to do what they said they were gonna do. We didn't say the upfit grant was gonna pay for completion of their, their project. They just said it could do certain things for their project, uh, demolition and things of that nature. One of them got completely, I guess, up two fifteen thousand, the other one, I think he got maybe seven or eight thousand. He didn't have enough in there to get every...
But the thing I got a problem with is they got our money.
They do, and nothing's been done.
Right.
So, we, we don't have anything in place that says, you owe us money back.
I understand that, yeah, I understand.
Whether we should do condemned buildings, maybe not. You know, in the beginning, I think we all thought that was the way to get these condemned buildings done, but it doesn't matter.
That's all we got?
Man, on that, uh, President Davis, have you had any reports of, uh, folks prepaying them, uh, signed down there on, uh, Martin Luther King? About five, six of them, somebody prepaying.
Yeah, I turned that in to the state last week to let them know, and I think an incident report was also done, because they hit one of the businesses in that area too.
What do you mean, on that, on that, uh, project down there, do we have all those, I mean, everything going?
I'm sorry?
The coverage, the kind of thing that you're doing, is that everyone's signing their prepayment?
Everything's in the works to handle, yeah, but I mean, next thing to be done is designing work. They'll take the engineers' time to design what needs to be done, and get permits that they have to get. Now, you're probably talking six to nine months before you see me down there to have a...
We need to, uh, we need to let folks know that that, 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 we have this factory, that we have to do that.
Well, it's actually Martin Luther King.
Right. That's all we got.
Get back real quick too, uh, when I was talking about Florence spending all that money, my whole point was saying, and Florence still has empty buildings downtown. Okay, okay. You know, this is just Florence, uh, let me, uh, mention, I, I have made my announcement that I'm not gonna seek a fifth term. I've been thinking about that for some time, Glenn knows it, I've been sitting here out there for, yeah, about thirteen, um, you know, this last quarter was, um, you know, right behind that hurricane, the fourth quarter in my business was tough, whatever it is, it was really, really tough. Then we did that show that I brought in, raising all the money on the, the Scrooge production, uh, which, it turned out well, that was a good thing for, for us here. And it, it, that's also helped a few tremendously. Uh, and then the old northern stuff, you know, but Friday night, we had a function, and this is where I want to come from, you know, I, my youngest, so my oldest son's high school went by, and, 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 um, you can be as busy as you want to be as the mayor. You can, you can sit back and not do much and not spend much time, and that's never the way I do it. Glenn has been fantastic, maybe, I hope that I've been a help to Glenn, um, and for him to bounce things off me, you know, that was my intention. But, you know, I missed my son's game Friday night. I'm missing my son's game tonight. I've missed three, the last three weeks for various things, and I'm gonna look back on that, and, um, and that's, that's the primary reason. I've kinda felt like, uh, some people have come to me, and you can't do it, you can't do it, you're gonna leave right, leave right in the middle of this time, uh, while you're quitting on us, but that's not, that's not the case, I hope to stay involved. And I, I think the next mayor, whoever that, that'll be, it's not gonna be a change, it would have to take a whole set of change on council for things to, to change. People are just, I think, they're a little worried, because the city has operated so well all these years by, by this council, the, uh, the staff, all the way from the, the legal to the personnel, the codes, and those fellows sitting in the back row, and the ones that aren't here tonight. And employees themselves, it's like I said, that they wouldn't have it any other way, nor the public. Because they don't see, and I don't know the situation at the county, who's right or wrong, what's going on there, but when you have, uh, the newspaper in chaos, they don't have the chaos here, and, um, they don't want to have it here. And it's not been here because of the people working here, and the people needing to sit here. And that'll continue, because it's, you know, it's just, uh, it's just a well-oiled machine. We got our challenges, we got our problems, and always we will, being a municipality, but it's as good a shade right now going forward that you'll ever have. I hope to stay involved, I want to stay involved as a volunteer, uh, any way I can do it. But I'll have more to say about it, I want to thank everybody for all they've done to me and my family, who gave me the opportunity to serve, it's been a pleasure. who gave me the opportunity to serve, it's been a pleasure to do that, and I hope to continue to do it. It's the greatest place to live. The only thing I regretted, I have never used my office to, uh, thank God for what he's done in my life. You know, brought me from a job in Windsor, you know, praying to come back to Dillon, because I didn't want to run away from Dillon, I wanted to run back to Dillon. And I was there as, in quality control when Matt Truck was there. And he did answer the prayer, but it took two years. And brought me back to Dillon in a capacity that I never could imagine, uh, of how he did. But I want to say tonight, thank you all on it, we got three more months, and I think we're gonna do some things in these three months with the parks and some other areas that, at short term, that I think we can do, but it's, it's been an honor, and I want to thank every one of you.
Well, before, before that, I mean, you, you got to have a photograph.
Oh, well, that's, that's-
I don't want to weigh like I did in the previous-
That's not the one you do at the post office.
There is the drawback to, to being the mayor, if you don't like pictures, you better not do it. If you don't like being in the public, you better not do it, or, but that is one thing I've never asked for. And that's, that's been the biggest issue with me, is that you'll, you'll see my Facebook page, you'll never see a selfie with me, or a selfie-
You need one on your wall, so.
Shining, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it, but.
It took Judge McIntyre to get us one about a year and a half after.
Well, I'll try to find one that'll work. It would be a hard job, but we'll find one.
Um, really don't have, um, really don't have anything to thank Todd for the sixteen years. We, uh, you know, just got a lot done under, you know, your mayorship, I think that's what it's called, and, um, you know, I've been on council, I don't know, twenty-four, twenty-five years, and I can, I can remember when we came on council, I was saying about this the other day, you know, we had equipment that we got from the salvage place in Columbia, we, you know, tinkered with it a little bit, got it running, and, you know, we go to a project, we'd work two hours, and then the rest of the day, we'd just sit looking at broke equipment. You know, in the past sixteen years, you know, we're buying new equipment, and, uh, I think that we have new equipment, you get things done, your employees enjoy working for you. Yeah, we've done that, we're, we're, we're the whole team do. But we did have been a great place, um, to live, serve, and we do have a great, a great city, a great staff. Had the opportunity today to talk to a young doctor about moving to Dillon, and, um, if anybody can sell Dillon, I can, and, uh, you know, it's, um, I don't know whether she'll come or not, but, uh, it's, it's a good place, it's a selling place, we've got a great product. I don't think we display our product, or our product isn't displayed the way it should be on the internet. Maybe, you know, we can do something about that, you know? I'm here, I'm here to serve. Anyway, that's all I have.
I just back to the people saying, uh, Todd, I remember twenty years ago when I ran the first time, it was mainly because of chaos, to be honest with you. Every time I picked up the paper, there was arguing amongst the council members, there was secret meetings, and I just assured the public, since I've been on twenty years, I know of any secret meetings where there's been a forum at a event to try to discuss to, try to pull something over, and, uh, that just because of the guidance of you and previous Mayor, Mayor Sally done a great job too, she, I think she got ball rolling, and when you came in, you just followed up on it. I've known Todd since probably about nine, ten years old, and, uh, thank the Lord to him and his family, and he's gonna be shortly, yes, I appreciate it, so.
Well, I'd like to congratulate you on making your decision on what you want to do for yourself. And, um, it's been nice working with you, and I thank my husband and your family real well, and he is your brother and your father. And, um, the only thing I have for tonight is that I noticed that, we've been talking about people moving back to the city, and the look of the city, I've noticed that, I'm noticing a lot of trash out the roads now. And like a stop sign, they just stopped, looking like they're cleaning cars out. And it's been more quiet a lot, a lot, really, and it's just started to look good. And I wish that, I don't know, who would pick it up, or?
We try to get what we can, and the Sheriff's Department has a, they have a control that does a lot for us in the city as well. If you can, whenever you see an area like that, just let us know, and we'll try to get somebody over there as quickly as possible, just.
Are we happy with the way they pay three-oh-one? Good, it is awful. I mean, I mean, we have anything to say to DOT about it.
Yeah, I was like, Chief Glenn, you say you hadn't seen those pictures of the quit payment signs?
Ma'am, I'm, I'm good there.
And I, I have pictures of it, and I'd like to ask you some questions about it, after the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you got a great job on the fire, uh, Saturday night.
Well, just to follow up about paving, Bert and I sat in a meeting, was it last week, Bert? With the C funds? Remember, we requested money through C funds to do the paving there on Main where we took out the meeting, that's in the works, um, met with the contractor.
Just make sure it hit the same one.
Well, it's actually the same one, because they got to come back and do some stuff, and that's what, when you mentioned that, they've got to come back and do some things, and, um, they may do that, which C funds will pay us or give us the amount of money, we in turn, turn around and pay the contractor, so that'll be sometime spring, early summer.
While y'all talking about DOT, you know, there's been a push on this, lips on potholes throughout the state, must go deal with that.
Uh, I talked with the local resident maintenance engineer today about that briefly, and-
Let us know when you're there.
Yeah, he, he does.
I heard Domino's is good.
Yeah, Domino's is good.
All right, Will, nothing else?
I'm making a motion, motion.